I'd like to now call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for February 22nd, 2021. I do want to remind everyone that per the Governor's orders, individuals must remain masked when indoors within the presence of others. However, there's a mask mandate that includes a provision to remove masks when communicating with individuals who are hard of hearing. To ensure that our closed captioning is able to accurately capture our presenters and comments, staff will remove their masks at the podium as it does have the additional barrier in place. As we wind down with our last week in February, we continue to move forward in our commitment to return students safely back to the classrooms. I would like to mention that in addition to your YCSD TV channels, our meeting is also being livestreamed on YouTube this evening as well, and I would like to now read the mission statement of YCSD. The mission of the York County School Division is to engage all students in acquiring the skills and knowledge needed to make productive contributions in the world. Our pledge leader is Nevea Banda. Nevea Banda is a 5th grade student who is new to Dare Elementary this year, but has already made a tremendous and positive impression. She has straight A's and was highly recommended for this honor. Nevea is extremely organized and takes responsibility for keeping up with and completing her work with a high degree of quality. When she has questions, she is not afraid to ask. She speaks up in a respectful and kind manner, and in all she does within the school community, Nevea is an excellent role model for her peers. Nevea's mother describes her as the most compassionate child she knows. Nevea likes to take care of other people at home, her church, and at school. She takes a leadership role in helping to organize her Sunday school classes. Nevea is also very creative. At 10 years old, she sews clothes for her Barbie dolls and likes to make houses for them. Maybe she'll become a fashion designer or an architect in the future, or Nevea, both. Nevea will succeed in whatever her aspirations are in the future because of her hard work ethic, responsibility, creativity, and kind demeanor. It is a privilege to have Nevea and her family at Dare this year, and she exemplifies the Dare Dolphin values of determination, responsibility, and kindness. We look forward to seeing where she leads us next. Please stand as Nevea leads us in our pledge.
Hello, my name is Nevea Banda, and I'm a 5th grader in Miss Halt's class at Dare Elementary. Please join me in saying the pledge today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Nevea. We're going to move on to our recognitions and awards, and we're going to start with our Seniors of the Month. We will begin with Bruton High School. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, thank you. The Bruton Senior of the Month for February is Linda Gist. And when we went to deliver her award tour this afternoon, her parents didn't tell her anything. She got kind of suspicious when they told her to put on a mask inside their house before they came outside, and then she came outside and was just totally surprised. So, we had a good time with her. But Linda is the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Terrence and Shayna Gist. Linda Gist is a resourceful, analytical, and outgoing panther. We're incredibly proud of all of Linda's accomplishments. For the past three years, Linda has served our school as a shining example of a student who is dedicated to her school as well as her academics. Linda has a passion for both the arts and science. She currently attends Governor's School for Science and Technology and participates in the School of the Arts. Linda has received numerous awards. She's a HOBY Ambassador, Grade 10, NAACP Outstanding Academic Award, Grades 9, 10, and 11, NAACP ACO Award for Dramatics and Contemporary Dance, Grades 9, 10, and 11, an honorary mention in the Great Computer Challenge, Grade 11. Linda is a cheerleader, Panther Achievement Leader, and a member of the NAACP Youth Council, French Club, Drama Club, Thespian Society, and Key Club. She is also currently in a program sponsored by NASA, Virginia Earth Science System Scholars, and is the only senior who participates in this program at Bruton. Recently, she submitted an original monologue in the Theater Folk Competition and was selected to be featured in a published book alongside other Black, Indigenous, and people of color artists. She has also been cast in a local production called Black Girl Magic, produced and directed by the Hurrah Theater Company, an all-female-run company. We look forward to Linda's continued success as she attends college next fall to major in law, theater, hydrology, or aerospace engineering. I think she had it all covered pretty much there. And she's currently looking at schools on West Coast, Stanford, USF, or USC, and has already been accepted to one in the United Kingdom. So, she could go either place, all around the world if she wants to, I think. Congratulations, Linda, on being Bruton's Senior of the Month.
Mr. Richardson, I believe you have the Grafton High School.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. It's my pleasure to introduce Rebecca Cubstead, the Senior of the Month from Grafton High School. Her parents are Patricia and Kevin Cubstead, and we were able to meet her mother today when we presented the award at their home. And the principal at Grafton High School, Whitney Cataldo, writes that "It's with great pride that we recognize Rebecca Cubstead as Grafton's February Senior of the Month. Rebecca is a student who embodies everything it means to be a Clipper by taking an active role in her school, excelling in academics, and always acting in a way that shows both integrity and our Clipper spirit. You will never see Rebecca without a smile and a kind word to say. Rebecca takes an active role in our school, and she is part of our Color Guard, swim team, cast member of our drama productions, and she has served as the captain of the Color Guard and lead role in the musical. Rebecca has earned the highest honors in all four years while at Grafton. Her dedication to her academics can be seen and highlighted in her membership to the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, where she serves as secretary. Rebecca's dedication does not stop at her academics, school, or extracurricular activities. She is also dedicated in her community as well. Every summer, she plays an active role in Vacation Bible School and serves as leader for her church. She also works with the Peninsula Regional Education Program that assists refugees in learning the English language. Rebecca has a passion for helping and serving others, and she hopes to pursue a career in education where she can continue to help others and be a lifelong learner. We are so proud of Rebecca and know that her future is bright with her dedication, her big heart, and commitment to excellence. It is with great honor to recognize Rebecca as Grafton's Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Rebecca."
Mr. Myatt, I believe you'll tell us about the TAB High School Senior of the Month?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I'm delighted to introduce Sarah Good, TAB High School's Senior Month for February. I'd also like to acknowledge Sarah's parents, Yusef Good and Lady Cruz Good. We also had an opportunity to visit the Goods and Sarah at their home this morning, I should say this afternoon, before the rain, and she had several neighbors too that came out. So, it was a very nice event and well-received. Sarah's a highly motivated student, very interested in the study of art. She is strong academically and consistently delivers high-quality work. She's involved in her school and community and can always be relied upon to do the right thing. Sarah was recently recognized by the NAACP Afro-Academic Cultural Technological and Scientific Olympics, or ACO, as the highest-achieving African-American student in a very competitive senior class at TAB with a GPA of well above 4.0. Her academic course load is very rigorous, and upon graduation, she will complete six advanced placement courses and seven honors courses. In addition, Sarah is a great problem-solver, and when confronted with challenges, she has to drive to find unique solutions, often on her own. Sarah's a creative person and, again, inspired by art. She has taken several classes in order to broaden her experience within art, and she hopes to participate in a fine arts program while at college. Sarah's also involved in school clubs and sports. She's been a member of the bowling club since freshman year, where her leadership and skill helped earn her captain every year. She has also accepted TAB's first National Art Honor Society, where she helped design holiday cards for the school. In addition to clubs, Sarah's been a varsity lacrosse player since 9th grade, was the only student in her grade every year on the team, and helped the Tigers earn second-best defensive team on the Peninsula. Outside of school, Sarah volunteers with her church and at community events, and also enjoys experimenting with multiple art mediums in her free time. Sarah is a talented and creative person who is also thoughtful and forthright. She works hard at everything that she does and surrounds herself with positive influences. She is responsible and inquisitive, and it's my pleasure to recognize Sarah Good as TAB High's Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Sarah.
Ms. Gerrots, you have York High School.
Absolutely. I'm honored to announce Oliver Schlosser as the York High School Senior of the Month for February. Oliver is determined, compassionate, and a hard-working young man. He has excelled academically throughout his time at York High School. He pushes himself and puts his all in everything that he does. Oliver also attends the New Horizons Career and Technical Education Center, which allows him to explore the field that interests him. Oliver is a talented student-athlete and an important member of the varsity football team. He has held the leadership role of captain, where he's able to lead on and off the field. He motivates his teammates and encourages them to be the best version of themselves. Oliver has also been a member of the varsity wrestling team and tennis team. His courage and resilience make him a standout amongst his peers. Oliver is very passionate about his school and the surrounding community. At York High School, he's actively involved in the Student Council Association. He is also active with a local church, spending his summers as a counselor for Vacation Bible School while also serving on mission trips. He lives his life to serve others and inspires those around him to do the same. Ollie, congratulations on being recognized February Senior of the Month.
We would also like to show a photo of last month's York High School senior visit to Swan Tran. We visited Swan on Tuesday, the day after the meeting, due to some scheduling issues, but we wanted to show the photo. So, congratulations once again. And Dr. Shandor, I believe you have the next topic.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. So, we are in School Board Appreciation. So, this evening in recognition of School Board Appreciation Month, we would like to present each of our School Board members with a Virginia School Boards Association Certificate of Recognition,
and we never have to worry about anything in a time where we should be worrying about a lot of things. So, just thank you so much for always being there and just doing everything,
along with a gift, as just a small way to express our appreciation to them for their
again, with a smile and a kind word. We really appreciate it.
support, leadership, oversight, and student advocacy that they provide our School Division
And thank you for being there to answer questions. I'll tell you what, that has probably
each and every day. The gifts are in the back. We had a chance to give those to the board
been the best thing for me this whole entire past year, is if you need to know anything,
members before the meeting. Certainly, this year's been full of unique challenges, to
you call Sandy. Thank you.
say the very least. I appreciate their willingness to work closely with our team as we navigated
I think I told the two board members when you came on how invaluable she was, and
through data, developed plans, and made a multitude of decisions. On behalf of the
you're seeing it now. So, she really is, and thank you for everything you do, Sandy.
School Division, thank you so much for providing guidance, flexibility, and a strong commitment
And Sandy, you have that rare combination of qualities: kindness, support, and extreme
to students at the core of each recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
competence. I don't have to ask any questions because she anticipates them. And I deeply,
Let's give them a round of applause.
Before we move on to the next portion of our meeting, I do want to take a moment
I really appreciate it. I know we all appreciate it. Thank you, Sandy.
Moving on in our meeting, we have unfinished business. I don't believe we have any. Does and recognize somebody else. Sandy Ford is our Board Clerk, and this past week was any board member have any unfinished business for us today? Okay, seen none. We'll move the School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, and I know that she was recognized at the School Board Office that last week, but we wanted to publicly thank you for all the on. We have presentations coming up next, the reopening update. Dr. Shandor, do you work that you do for us and for YCSD. It's just amazing. You always do it with a smile. have comments about this topic?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. As Dr. Carroll goes to the podium, I did want
You end every email with "Hope you're having a great day." So, we wanted to give you this
to introduce a new leader in our School Division. This evening, we have, if Mr. Laron Hargrove
small token. We can't show you how much we really appreciate you, but this is the one
could please stand up. So, Mr. Hargrove is our new Associate Director of Transportation
way that we figured we could. So, Sandy, thank you so much.
and Warehouse Operations. He comes to us from Hampton City Schools, many years of experience as a supervisor. He also retired from the Army, from what I heard. He retired really young from the Army, is that what I'm understanding? He also holds two master's degrees. He started last week, and he's had the opportunity to meet all the drivers. Dr. Carroll has taken him to each of the four zones to meet our drivers. He's worked really closely with transportation staff and all the guys in the shop. He's met all the principals at a principals' meeting, and tomorrow morning, he'll have the opportunity to meet our assistant principals. So, we certainly welcome him to our county and look forward to working with him. So, welcome, Laron.
All right. Now, we'll get on with Dr. Carroll, who's been here for a long time.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, and Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board. Tonight, I'll bring you yet another update on how we progress with reopening. And so, it is just a drastic difference than when I stood before you two weeks ago. And the first thing I want to do, though, is really take the time to celebrate the food service work that we've done. I know I've mentioned it in the past. Cheryl Parr and her team have done a great job, and our partner, Sedexo, has just been so diligent and just doing a great job. And the volunteers, that when you go out there and you see them, you know, week after week, and I want to thank you, members of the board, that went out to help celebrate this milestone of 1 million meals served in less than a year, because we haven't come up to a year quite yet, but quite a job that those ladies do. Couldn't thank them enough. So, I also want to talk about vaccination. I'll give you an update there. Now, of course, everybody is aware that we have had service in the supply chain get disrupted this last week with the terrible storms in the Midwest, and that has caused us a delay in where we thought we would be, but we have started second doses with our staff. And as of today, we think it's about 5% of the staff has received their second dose. 900 we're coming due this week and 400 next week. Those are, you know, roundabout numbers. We hope that that won't be more of a delay than a week there, and we still anticipate hopefully some news midweek on that. Of course, you know that with vaccinations, that will help us with less of our employees out sick. We'll be able to shorten some ADA accommodations, and we'll have less quarantines, and you know that quarantines equate to closures, temporary closures. And also, as we move forward, it will allow us to monitor not the eastern region, not the larger peninsula, but we'll be able to focus more on York County numbers alone, and that will assist us as we go forward. The next thing that I want to talk about is some quarantine changes that we put into effect on February 16th. A lot of people were aware that in December, the CDC changed, revised some of their guidance on quarantines, and they allowed School Divisions to move to two other types of quarantine. Now, they still stood by 14 days as being the best practice while we're in this pandemic, and we agreed that we didn't want to change our timeline there as long as we were going into an increasingly burdensome time in the third wave. And so, all along, we talked, and we felt like if we could get past the crest of the third wave, start to show some momentum coming down in that respect, then we would then move to a 10-day quarantine. Now, that won't change the number of quarantines we have, but it will cut in effect the amount of time that a student is out or a staff member is out by a third. There is one other option that involves a seven-day quarantine if you can produce some, you know, proof of a negative test, and we felt that that was too burdensome on our team to try to prove and to keep track of and to make sure that we were doing it in an effective manner. So, we've settled in on the 10-day quarantine. We made that recommendation to Cabinet on the 16th. We also, just a couple of days after I spoke to you two weeks ago, the CDC released guidance that we had been hoping for, which was that once people are vaccinated, they can have zero quarantine when they're ruled as a close contact as soon as they are at the status of second dose plus 14 days. And so, we took both of these to Cabinet on the 16th, and they approved them, and we made them effective immediately. So, that's something we've been doing since last Tuesday. The third thing that I want to talk to you about is, talk to the public a little bit because I know you're aware of, was the rationale for the change in our direction for grades 7 through 11. You'll remember that two weeks ago, we said, "Look, January 28th, that last week of January was about as bad as things had gotten as far as quarantines, positive cases, temporary closures, and the case burden in community transmission," which had reached 834 per 100,000. And right before that meeting, we started to see a little bit of a downturn, but not enough to say we could predict anything. But it was amazing how fast, once there became a little bit of momentum, how fast things came together. So fast that by that Friday, we were convening the principals to talk about some last-minute preparations for coming back, and then on Tuesday, we made the final decision to complete the plan for a return of 7th through 11th grade. So, as you can see there, the new case rate had fallen from 834 to 407, and that continues today. We were at 301, which equates to about where we were that week before winter break. Quarantines had fallen in that same time from 273 to 122. We're in the 70s today. And quarantine changes that, you know, were in the offing that we were talking about before we made a final decision on the 16th. And all of our temporary school closures had cycled through at that time. Now, we do have one 4th-grade cohort that is out till March 1st, but that's the entirety of our temporary closures right now. We also expected the bulk of the second vaccines to be delivered this week, and we expect a significant number of ADA accommodations to end by March 1st. But the most important metric was our substitute fill rate, which had improved 15% just in that two-week period from that last week of January until the week after February 8th. So, all of this combined to be an improving picture of where we are at. And so, we recommended that we come up with a plan for bringing 7th through 11th back as long as we can keep the substitute fill rate at a number that keeps us there and keeps our operational integrity viable. And we feel like we're in a good place because the supply of substitutes has improved. I think Dr. Vladu would say we've had an increase of 50 subs take jobs from the month of November, but we were seeing an increasing number take them in the first two weeks of February. And then also the demand, if less people are out, sicknesses and quarantines, then the demand for those subs goes down. So, all of that contributing to the fact that our substitute fill rate could improve. So, on the 16th, we announced that we were going to go with this configuration, that the 11th graders would report today, and they did. And as long as we can keep that fill rate up, we will have 7th and 9th grade report next Monday, and then the Monday after that, that's grades 8 through 10, and that will then complete getting all the grades into hybrid instruction. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll. Before we get to questions, a couple additional thoughts. Our plan throughout the reopening of schools has been to take deliberate, purposeful steps based on data. You got to see a little bit of that data this evening. I also want to be clear that we've listened to our families and staff over the past 11-plus months. We certainly hear you. We know many of you want your children back in school on a daily basis, and that's obviously our ultimate goal as well, including my three kids at home. I also can't give enough praise to our staff. Dr. Carroll and our operations teams have worked to ensure our schools are safe. Our instruction and school admin teams have spent countless hours redefining instruction and supporting teachers as they navigated a new type of curriculum online, a new classroom online. And of course, our teachers and school staff who've reached out to support so many students and families throughout this year. So, moving forward, we will continue to rely on data and state guidance in our steps towards returning to a traditional school schedule for those families who've selected the option to have their children in person. Not only do we want to be in place for next school year, I'm sorry, excuse me, in place next school year and summer school, but we want to take the first steps for our youngest as soon as possible this year. So, we really want, obviously, to get our students back. Dr. Carroll and Ms. Skinner have begun working on these details, and we'll have some preliminary work, and hopefully, we can bring that to you at the March work session. The state has also convened a work group. It's called Virginia Learns, and they will be presenting its work in issue, a report by the end of April on its findings regarding the opening of schools and mitigating the impact of the pandemic on learning and student mental health. So, this group is accepting public feedback, and we'll share a link to that form with our families, staff, hopefully, this week. So, as you heard from Dr. Carroll, there are some things changing. We're waiting on the vaccines to get here, and hopefully, we can continue moving forward following getting the full hybrid. So, at this point, we'll take any questions you have.
Can you talk a little bit about how you're going to handle the reactions to the second dose and what outages would come from that?
Yeah, that's a difficult one. You know that I've alluded to that in previous conversations with you, because we do know, and we're getting more and more from people that we know from other School Divisions, hearing that that reaction is real, and it does affect a significant amount of the work staff. So, it really comes down to, as we get information on our vaccination times and how many, and quite frankly, how much control we have over that as far as how many directing the invitations in certain times. We, you know, if we were told we had 900 doses, and they were all on one day, and we could control what that day was, then there wouldn't be much impact at all. But if they get spread over a two-week period and very evenly spread out, then we can probably absorb it. But that's yet to be seen, and it's going to be just based on conditions and best guess. But there may be, and we're going to need people to be flexible, there may need to be some temporary closures depending off if individual schools are too heavily impacted on a given day.
I think the key word there is flexibility, and we've talked about that for the last 10, 11 months, that we have to be flexible. We have to be able to move and cut and pivot as we need to. I appreciate Dr. Carroll and all the work that he's done, leading this group and presenting this data and working with the Health Department as well. So, thank you, Dr. Carroll. Additional questions?
And, well, I was just going to say, I appreciate everything that you've done. We, as a School Division, have blazed the trail for the whole Peninsula, and you've been at the forefront, and I think that we've done it the right way, using the science and the mitigation strategies to get as far as we've gotten and then to go even further. And I think that, yes, we'll be flexible, and we can handle whatever comes our way now, because now it's just a known problem, whereas before, we were dealing with so much it was unknown. So, thank you.
Well, thank you on behalf of my team.
I have a question about the sub-fill rate, and this might be more for Dr. Vladu. With jumping up, you know, 15% very quickly, is that because some of the substitutes that were already hired that were inactive took jobs, or did we have a lot of community members, you know, jump up and get hired as substitutes or classroom facilitators? Just wondering if our job fairs yielded some fruit there.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Higginbotham. It's actually both. So, we are more folks from within our pool that are joining the ranks, but as you look tonight and the personnel actions, we gained some subs that we hired. Our team has been working very hard to bring in new subs, so it's due to both of those factors.
And the rate today, Dr. Vladu, was 84%?
84% fill rate today. That is correct.
Just a couple of quick comments, real quick. Yeah, great reason to be optimistic. There was a very comprehensive NIH and CDC briefing today. Other fact, we're not going to encounter other factors. One, for instance, is because of the optimism and pandemic fatigue. We've got, and this is really a message not only for the schools, we're holding the ground there, but in the community about, again, continuing to honor and reinforce those mitigation factors. And the other piece is travel, and they made mention of increased travel as being a factor for those that will leave, perhaps on a vacation, and obviously, we do know that the variations in strains are present, and bringing those back to the community while we're struggling to test, while we distribute a vaccine. So, as Mr. Schaefer said, we understand what it is to be in crisis planning, contingency planning, but those are factors we're going to have to weigh as we try to continue to navigate through this next
With jumping up, you know, 15% very quickly, is that because some of the substitutes that were already hired that were inactive took jobs, or did we have a lot of community members, you know, jump up and get hired as substitutes or classroom facilitators? Just wondering if our job fairs yielded some fruit there.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Higginbotham. It's actually both. So, we are more folks from within our pool that are joining the ranks. But as you look tonight and the personnel actions, we gained some subs that we hired. Our team has been working very hard to bring in new subs, so it's due to both of those factors.
And the rate today, Dr. Vladu, was 84%?
Eighty-four percent fill rate today, that is correct.
Just a couple of quick comments, real quick. Yeah, great reason to be optimistic. There was a very comprehensive NIH and CDC briefing today. Other fact, we're not going to encounter other factors. One, for instance, is because of the optimism and pandemic fatigue. We've got, and this is really a message not only for the schools, we're holding the ground there, but in the community about, again, continuing to honor and reinforce those mitigation factors. And the other piece is travel. And they made mention of increased travel as being a factor for those that will leave, perhaps on a vacation. And obviously, we do know that the variations in strains are present, and bringing those back to the community while we're struggling to test, while we distribute a vaccine. So, as Mr. Schaefer said, we've, we understand what it is to be in crisis planning, contingency planning, but those are factors we're going to have to weigh as we try to continue to navigate through this next phase in the spring. It's going to be, it's going to be challenging, as we all know.
Yes, we open a time where it's a race between vaccines versus variation.
Absolutely.
I believe that's it. Thank you very much, Dr. Carroll.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll. Thank you, Dr. Vladu.
Next, we have comments from citizens. Public participation at board meetings. We have two opportunities to speak this evening. The first is for general topics, and the second is specifically relating to comments relating to the public hearing on the fiscal year '22 operating budget. Before I open up for public comments, I will share a few remarks. School Board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that the speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, the superintendent, staff member, or audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. Each speaker may speak up to three minutes. A timer is visible to the speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will begin after you state your name and address. Relating to our safety measures, we are practicing social distancing this evening and continue to implement the safety, these safety measures. We're providing individual sign-up sheets and pens for each speaker. We're cleaning the podium area after each speaker, and we ask that you speak loudly, as the safety shield may muffle your voice. I would now like to open public participation for comments from citizens, and I will call up those who have signed up to speak. We have one speaker for the general topics, and that's Mr. Robert Ross.
Good evening, Chairman, School Board members. Robert Ross, 1611 First Colony Trace. Last October, I stood before this board and conveyed that, in spite of the virus, the time had come to accelerate and fully reopen our high schools. In November, I reiterated my call for a full-time opening based on the soundness of the mitigation strategies and the overwhelming evidence that schools are safe, noting at that time, the CDC said that schools are one of the safest places children can be during a pandemic. Tonight, three months later, I applaud the division in moving forward, but the goal is not yet within sight. Full-time, five-day-a-week, school needs to be vocalized and then actualized. It is up to each one of you to lead this community to that goal. I implore the division to block out all the extreme noise surrounding school reopenings, rely on pragmatic, flexible approaches, and critically think through the problem sets, and do not fall into group think traps or blind adherence to guidance. For example, current CDC distancing guidance, if continued, creates a significant, a significant barrier to full-time, in-person learning as well as busing. However, quoting from a recent Stat News article, one of the early skeptics of the six-foot guidance was physician Rochelle Walensky, who was recently appointed to lead the CDC. She advised her local school district last summer that it is quite safe and much more practical to be at three feet. And while her, in her current capacity, she recently walked back that statement, a recent study from seven school districts in Ohio concluded that there was minimal value from strict adherence to a six-foot rule as long as masking is adhered to. Furthermore, the WHO recommends three feet, and European schools have fully implemented universal three-foot guidance. Many school divisions across this great nation have opened full-time with no more risk to students and teachers, as multiple studies have proven that students are not significant infection vectors. We are now six months away from the fall term. This community cannot go through another summer of uncertainty. Our schools are safe. We need to continue to rally around our students and give them the same opportunities for full-time, in-person learning as other students across this country. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ross. That is the only card I received. Are there any other general comments? Okay. And I will close the public comment for general comments, and we will open up our public participation for the public hearing on the fiscal year '22 budget. Before we have anyone comment, Dr. Shandor, would you like to share some information?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Yeah, I have a little bit of information to share this evening. So, my budget proposal for FY '22 has been released, and copies are available in the public libraries in the county and on the school division's website. Tonight, the school board is conducting a public hearing on the proposed budget. Some highlights include in the budget proposal are, the operating budget totals are roughly $155.5 million, or 4% more than the approved FY '21 budget. Budget includes a $1.66 million or 2.1% increase in the state revenue and a $1.6 million or 2.9% increase in the county contribution. The proposed operating budget also includes $2.3 million of CARES Act funding that we received in FY '21, but will be carried over to FY '22. The FY '22 proposed budget is based on a projected student membership of 12,420 students. This is an increase of 152 students over the actual FY '21 student membership. On the expenditure side, my recommendations regarding the FY '22 budget focus on three main budget priorities: instruction and learning, retention and recruitment, and compliance and safety. This budget includes an $800,000 in savings and attrition, which will be used to assist in funding the three budget priorities. At the time my budget was presented, the General Assembly had not completed its work on a final state budget. Just last week, the governor announced an additional $740 million available for FY '21 and FY '22. If there are changes to K-12 funding, Mr. Bowen and I will provide that information at the March 8th work session. Additionally, the federal government is working on a third stimulus package for school divisions. We will provide information to the school board as it becomes available. The school board will also hold a work session on the, on March 8th to have further discussion relating to the superintendent's proposed budget. School board is scheduled to approve their FY '22 budget proposal on March 22nd for forwarding to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration during this process. Thank you.
We do not have any speakers for the fiscal year '22 public hearing on the operating budget, so I will close this public comment. And we're going to move on to matters by board members. We'll start with Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Not a whole lot to report with things going on as they have been, but I was able to tour a few schools back two weeks ago with Dr. Shandor. I visited Darryl Elementary, Grafton Middle, Grafton High School, and it was great to see, at that point, we had some seniors that were back in the schools then. So, it was great to see that and see the students that were in the schools, you know, peering in from the outside hallways, looking in, and how they were doing in the classroom. And I know the teachers were excited to have them there, as long, as well as the principals as well. And then we headed to the bus garage, was able to participate and be there, actually, when Dr. Shandor presented an Apple Award to one of the employees up there, Linwood, at the bus garage. And that was, that was really nice to be able to partake in that as well. So, that's all I have to report, and I'll let the meeting move on.
Ms. Garretts?
Sure. So, it's nice to be back with you guys in person. Thank you for accommodating my last-minute change at our work session. And this month, I got to spend some time at Y E S. They planned a scavenger hunt for their one school, one book, and that it was just an example of thinking outside the box, and just the amount of families that came through with their kids, it was absolutely amazing. I mean, we were running and running and running. But again, just thinking outside the box, and so, it's just a testament to what our teachers are doing, just trying to figure out how to still engage kids and families outside the normal school day. It was really great. Got to attend the virtual awards for the science fair this past week, and then also celebrate the 1 million meals, which, again, I don't know if our community actually understands the magnitude of 1 million, but even just seeing what one day is when they're distributing those meals, it's absolutely amazing, and those people are working so hard. So, that was really great. And the last thing I want to say is, you know, as we get emails, phone calls, people stop us in the grocery store, and, you know, everybody wants to get back to normal. I know, "normal", we have to use quotation marks now when we talk about that, but I know that that's going to take a lot of baby steps, probably a million baby steps. And so, I'm grateful for all the people that are taking part in those baby steps by sending their juniors back, sending their freshmen back, because I think the more we can do that and just take part in those baby steps, we'll get back to a more normal time in our lives, especially in education. So, I'm grateful for that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, as I reported last time, I was able to visit three of my schools and got to speak to teachers and principals and cafeteria workers and coaches, and had a great time in the schools and seeing the kids. The kids are just so happy to be in school, and the teachers love to have their audience. They really do. They feed off the excitement of the kids, and they are actually doing the teaching, and the kids are doing the learning. And it's been awesome. It really has. I was very glad to see normalcy, I guess you could call it, creeping into the schools. It's like people are getting used to it. The kids are getting used to it. The teachers are, are used to being in their groove now. And I think that we are just hitting on all cylinders, as much as we can be, in this hybrid situation, and look for it to get better as soon as possible. I would like to thank the schools and principals and the teachers that have sent notes or sent me emails, and the citizens also, of appreciation for School Board Month. I was totally blown away by some of the heartfelt thank-yous that I received, and it was very much appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Myatt?
Yeah, absolutely. Had an opportunity to also visit TAB High School and for the 1 million meals distributed milestone since last March. I don't know that folks appreciate. I think it's 35,000 meals a month is what we're distributing. They distribute about 1,000 weekly at TAB. Many of the volunteers are teachers, so it was great, inspiring, certainly, to be with that group and to be with Dr. Shandor and Cheryl Parr, who did the lion's share organizing and that heavy lifting there or across the division for that matter. As we all know, February is a very busy month, particularly for the school calendar. So, again, I'd like to extend my thanks in District 5 to the school leadership teams, teachers, and staff for notes and other goodies for school board appreciation. It was very kind of those teams to do that, and I've enjoyed reading those notes and sharing them with fellow board members. It is also National Career Technical Education, or CTE, Month. That's when we recognize and value the impact of CTE programs, have them preparing students for a wide range of careers, including business and healthcare, information technology, advanced manufacturing, and marketing, just to name a few. Jennifer Romanelli is the coordinator for career development, and I want to share a couple of insights that we received from her in regard to CTE despite the pandemic. Just some numbers here to give you some insight in what, as a coordinator and the career coaches have been doing over the last half-year. Economic and personal finance classes participated in virtual mock interviews. As many as 917 high school students were given the opportunity or did participate. 61 engaged NYCSD business partners served as interviewers and completed an evaluation for each student. So, we've got heavy student participation at the secondary level, but we also have our business partners participating in a virtual way. Career coaches have also worked tirelessly to transition the career connection activities to virtual experience for students, and so far this year, they've coordinated 34 guest speakers, two career panels for cybersecurity and architecture classes, hosted seven college and career cafes virtually, and these events collectively touched almost 1,200 high school students. So, still quite a bit going on with our partners in the community and through our career coaches and our CTE coordinator. And then finally, February is also Black History Month, and I wanted to mention again, or take this opportunity, you know, we join together in paying tribute to generations of African-Americans and their enormous contributions to this American story. So, I wanted to make sure we mentioned again, Black History Month for February. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt. On the same tone with that, I've seen some things on very social media, some lessons and things that people have posted about Black History Month, and it's, it's just neat to see those things being, you know, spotlighted in the classroom. And I know we have a robust curriculum that shows people from, contributions from all backgrounds, but it's really neat to see that being, you know, utilized right now. I also was at TAB High School and at Grafton High School for the 1 million meals celebration. At TAB High School, and particularly the cafeteria, if you go in there and see it, every single table was stacked two and three bags high to have the meals for the people. And that was just TAB, you know, and then each school is like that. So, it's just incredible to see just the undertaking that's gone into it. And they do it, you know, every week. Early on to, into the pandemic, they're doing it twice a week, and always doing it with a smile and everything. It's just wonderful that we're able to give those meals to families that have some food insecurity during these times. And we, I just really appreciate Ms. Parr and all the staff that goes into that. I also visited the science fair and the engineering fair awards on Thursday. It was a virtual award through Microsoft Teams. Got to share a couple short comments. Ms. Garretts, I believe you were there watching as well. It was, it was neat to see those, those kids so proud of their accomplishments and their work, being able to turn their camera on and off at the appropriate times and show up. They had the biggest smiles on their faces as their names were called. And for those who won awards, congratulations. It was a wonderful evening. And lastly, of course, the senior visits today was nice, even in the rain going for that. It's nice to see the families celebrating the success of the students and to see the students' faces. Most of them have no idea that it's coming, and they don't understand, you know, why these people show up in their front lawns, you know, randomly. So, it's, it's really nice to be able to see and recognize those people. So, that's it for board, matters by board members, and we're going to move on to the financial matters, and Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham, and I appreciate that. And it's been a while since I've done financial matters, but hopefully, I'm not too rusty at it. So, we'll move through these pretty quickly. So, consideration for approval of claims for certified payment. We have those for January of '21. Related to instruction totals $209,430, and it includes New Horizons, Instructure, Power School, and Sony Merryman. Sony Merryman was for some, was $15,300 for some special needs equipment. We also had payments related to IT that totaled approximately $331,070 and included payments to CenturyLink, Citrix, Cox Communications, Microsoft Corporation, Mid-Atlantic for fire and security and inspection services, and Schick Communications for the complex, Grafton Complex, Intercom, and PA and clock replacement, and also business, Virginia Business Systems. We then had payments for operations that totaled $48,235 and included payment to Dominion Energy for electrical services. Then we had payments related to construction and maintenance projects that totaled $561,825 to include payments to Heartland Construction, Mobile Lease Modular for three modular classrooms, and RRMM Architects for the design work for Seaford Elementary School. We have payments related to transportation that totaled approximately $591,700 and included payment to Kingmore Supply, which is for school buses. Payments related to food service totaled approximately $329,280 and included payments to Sedexo for their contractor services and Tyson Foods for the USDA foods. Next, the consideration of approval for financial reports for January 2021. Significant changes relating to the operating budget for January revenues. State revenue for January of '21 is up about $2.4 million from January of 2020, and the increase is based on the Department of Education's projected enrollment for the 2021, 2020, 21 school year. It's important to note that the actual enrollment is about 870 students less, that we've said that several times, but just to reiterate that of what was budgeted. However, the state will continue to fund the school divisions on the projected enrollment through the remainder of the year. For expenditures, instructional expenditures for January are up more than $2.3 million when compared to January of 2020, and this increase is due to the cost of maintaining virtual and hybrid instruction programs. Significant changes relating to the food service budget for revenues and expenditures. Local food service revenue through January is down more than $1.15 million when compared to January of 2020, since students are not being charged for meals for this school year. However, the federal revenue has increased by $1.55 million over the same period as a result of the USDA's decision to cover the cost of all meals, and this trend will continue through June 30 of this year. And lastly, we have a consideration of approval of Resolution 21-07 authorizing specific procurement, and it authorizes the procurement of more than $50,000 for a vendor to be determined for a security grant for the bus camera system for approximately $70,000. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I now approve financial, I'd like to make a motion to approve financial matters as listed.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion is made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve financial matters as listed. Do you may cast your vote? You may cast your vote. Thank you. The motion passed five to zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
Good job. You didn't forget how to do it.
I didn't forget how to do it.
Next on our agenda is our consent calendar, and we've had a chance to go over this already, but I'll just give you a brief list of what we have in our consent calendar. We have our approval of personnel actions, the consideration of approval of minutes for a special meeting and organizational meeting on January 11th, 2021, and a regular meeting on January 25th, 2021, approval of donations in the amount of 1,800, and then we have some, we're in need of a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed.
May I move we approve the consent calendar as listed?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion is made by Mrs. Garalt and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the consent calendar as listed. You may cast your votes. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Okay. For action items, we have an approval of a proclamation for Social Work Month for March of 2021. Dr. Shandor, would you like to share some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. In recognition of our school's social workers and the tremendous work they do, we have four social workers that serve 19 of our schools, and I'm going to share their names this evening. Ms. Leann Flynn, Ms. Sally McLean, Ms. Catherine Anthony, and Ms. Sheray Kotman. These four ladies work extremely hard. We appreciate the work that they do and that they perform on a daily basis as they provide support to our school's students and our community. During the past years, we have faced unusual challenges. Their expertise has been invaluable, and their contributions make a positive difference in the lives of students and their families. We thank them for their dedication to our students. Thank you.
We need a motion and a second to approve a proclamation for Social Work Month in March of 2021.
I move to approve the proclamation for Social Work Month, March 1 through 31.
And I second that motion.
Okay. Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion is made by Mr. Myatt and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the proclamation for Social Work Month, and you can cast your vote. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
In our policy for discussion, we have the discussion of Policy Section B on School Board Policy and Governance. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham, and again, good evening, board members. This is quite a lengthy policy, as you've had a chance to review the draft, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Melanie Berry. She's our deputy county attorney. She's going to share some information related to the policy revisions. Ms. Berry?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Higginbotham, and members of the board. Tonight, I brought to you changes to Policy B, School Board Governance and Operations. Many of the proposed revisions are either editorial changes, updates to the legal references, language revisions, and changes that align the policy with the Virginia School Board Association model policy as well as the Virginia Code. I'll only hit the highlights because there are a lot of changes. Section BBA, School Board Powers and Duties. This change is adding schoolless drivers to the areas of critical shortages that are reported to the state superintendent. BBFA is one of the big sections changed, that's the Conflict of Interest and Disclosure of Economic Interest section. We have adding new training requirements for elected school board members. We've expanded the definition of gift to mirror that that's in the Virginia Code. The threshold for board members or employees' income, salary, and/or property value that's required to be reported on the Statement of Economic Interest has gone from $10,000 down to $5,000. We now can allow the employment of family members of school board members and the superintendent under certain circumstances. The conduct prohibited by the Act has been expanded, including the acceptance of gifts and the use of a position to retaliate against a person for expressing views of public concern. Defines what a prohibited gift is, which is anything in value over $100. There are civil penalties now added for failure to file the Statement of Economic Interest by February 1st. There are rules added as it relates to the release of disclosure forms by the clerk. There's also an option that's been added to seek an advisory opinion from the Commonwealth Attorney, the County Attorney, or the Virginia Conflict of Interest Ethics Advisory Council if you have a question as to this Complex of Interest Act. BCF, Advisory Committees to the School Board, this is a new policy that we're adding. This is necessary because you do have advisory committees that you appoint, and so this policy just recognizing that the board is appointing these committees, and there'll be a superintendent's regulation drafted as, as an addition. BDA, Regular School Board Meetings, we've added language to clarify that communication to ascertain a board member's position on a particular issue coming before the board is permissible, as long as this stays within BDA and the Freedom of Information Act. BDC and BDCA, Closed Meetings and Calling and Certification of Closed Meetings, both have been updated to align with VSBA model policy. Specifically for BDCA, language was added that references the possibility of civil penalties now for certifying a closed meeting that's not in accordance with FOIA. And then BDD, Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations. This has been added to align it with the Virginia Code, clarifying that the board can meet remotely as a whole, and then there's other circumstances when the board can only, can meet only when the board is, the quorum is physically present and individual board members want to meet remotely. There was also language removed that was only applicable to state bodies, it was not necessary. The rest of the sections are mostly minor changes, grammatical formatting changes. Does anyone have any questions about that?
That was a lot of reading. Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you. Can you answer the one question I had earlier, I contacted you about that, but thank you for all that work. I know it was a lot. Thank you.
Moving on, we have policy readings for first reading and second reading. We both have none, so we will move right to the report of the superintendent. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Just three really quick items tonight. First, again, want to thank the board members in celebrating School Board Appreciation Month, and we've said this a few times this year. A few of you were thrust into the situation and, you know, starting in January, then having the fire in February and all of this to deal with as far as COVID and all of the challenges that the team has. Our team can't say thank you enough for your, for your support, more important, more importantly, your questions, because that really helps us when you, when you're hearing in your communities how your constituents are, are thinking or, you know, how they're navigating and sharing the situations, the individual situations for each family, that really helps us. So, we certainly appreciate all the work that you do and the support you provide us. I want to echo a number of the comments this evening about the million meals served. We got to go visit those ladies, and as you saw, Cheryl Parr is probably one of the biggest cheerleaders you're ever going to meet for rallying people, and, and those ladies have done an amazing job, their, their attitudes and how they go about engaging with the community. I mean, one lady had dog treats in her pocket because she knew which cars came up when they had dogs in them, so they really just love and value serving our community and can't say thank you to them enough, so we certainly appreciate all the work they've done. And then finally, just want to thank all of our middle and high schools. When you think about the work that we've done to pull off winter sports at the middle and high school level, it took a lot of work from Dr. Carroll, Dr. Hartley, Dr. Butler on the operations side, but also our principals, our athletic directors, assistant principals and staff to set up protocols and have families come in a safe way. I think it was two, two parents per athlete. To be able to pull that off, it was very difficult. We did have to quarantine a few teams throughout the season, but again, I think at the end of the day, we gave our kids an opportunity to get out there and perform, and I think that we all saw really good examples of them being kids again and getting to go out there and compete, and it was, it was, it was great to see that. Looking forward to moving into our fall season, and again, our teams are working with our athletic directors to work through scheduling and all those types of things, so kudos to all of them. So, and then I just want to remind everyone that National Read Across America Day is March 2nd. We certainly encourage staff members at the school board office and others, board members, if you'd like to come in and read, we're reading on video so that our teachers can use those videos to share with our kids. So, thank you, and this concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shandor. Our next work session will be held Monday, March 8th at 6:00 PM, and we are in need of two closed sessions, and we need a board member to make a motion to take us into our first closed section pertaining to personnel matters.
I move that the York County School Board convene in closed session to discuss personnel matters relating to specific employees pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion is made by Mrs. Garalt and seconded by Mr. Richardson for the York County School Board to meet in closed session. You may cast your vote. Thank you. The board is now in closed session. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned. Please have a great week.